All right, welcome everyone. Tonight's Board of Education meeting is called to order. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, again, welcome everyone. Thanks for being here tonight. Secretary Torres, if you please take roll call.
Looks like we are missing Member Sutherland this evening.
Thank you so much. Okay, colleagues, moving on to the approval of tonight's agenda. Unless there are objections, tonight's agenda will be approved with one small amendment. We're going to change the Order of Information items A and B in order to begin with our amazing Special Olympians. All right. Let's now move on to information items tonight. Yep, sorry, recognition, sorry. I confused myself. All right, at this time, I would like to invite Leslie Walsh to join Member Petrusia at the podium. Well, Principal Walsh making their way up there. Annually, the Michigan Elementary and Middle School Association, along with SET, SEG, select the Michigan Principal of the Year. The qualification for this award reflects each nominee's commitment to the well-being of students and staff, as well as their problem-solving, communication, and leadership skills. In fact, being nominated for this award is a significant honor and demonstrates exemplary educational leadership. This evening, we are pleased to introduce and recognize our own Beaumont Elementary Principal, Leslie Walsh, Principal of the Year nominee. So on behalf of the Board of Education and entire Waterford School District community, congratulations on this distinguished and well-deserved honor, and thank you for all that you do at Beaumont Elementary. We like to put our administrators on the spot when they win really prestigious awards or are nominated for them, so.
I just wanted to say, you know, thank you for recognizing tonight. I don't know if anybody knows how I was originally told that this happened, but it was a complete surprise, and my whole entire school was in the gymnasium waiting. I thought it was a Jump Rope for Heart celebration, so I was like videotaping, not realizing that everyone was videotaping me as well. So that was, it was pretty amazing, but this job is not done alone. We have an amazing team. The Elementary Principal Group is amazing. I wouldn't be able to do that without them. Darren, thank you so much for all of your leadership over the past five years that I've five years, this fifth year in Waterford. And if you haven't been to Beaumont, it's a special place, and I am so grateful to be there every day. So, thank you.
So we have, I know we're gonna have some board members who are gonna want to chime in and sing your praises, Principal Walsh.
Well, as a, as a parent from Beaumont, when Mrs. Walsh was here for her first year, I will say that definitely when she came in, it was, she was a wonderful addition to our school community, and I know the kids just enjoyed being around. My daughter was a principal for a day that she had won at one point, so I just, I am not surprised at all that you were nominated for this, and I think it's, it's, just speaks volumes to who you are as a leader and as a person, and, and I can say that you are a wonderful principal, and congratulations. So, thank you for all you do for our kids and for our staff.
Colleagues, anything else on this, this amazing honor?
Just wanna chime in, congratulations. You know, I know, being an educator and being an administrator within a building, I mean, you wear a lot of hats, you do a lot of things, so kudos to you. It's always nice to see the special recognitions that you all get, because I know you, you know, it feels good, it keeps your motive, keeps you, you know, it's really that, that idea that it just keeps you, you know, loving what you do, no matter what, and so we're really proud of you, and thank you. And I'm interested to hear that Jump Rope for Heart's still around, 'cause I remember the year 1986, being in elementary school, going door-to-door. I don't know what my parents are thinking, let me go on my own, but going door-to-door, getting pledges for Jump Rope for Heart, so.
I'll let you know when we do it this year.
That's excellent, thank you.
Excellent, excellent. Our staff and administrators are winning so many awards recently, I think we need a sort of expanded section on our website. Really amazing. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, colleagues, let's now move on to public comments on action items. So these are items that we'll be taking action on by voting on this evening, so is there anyone who would like to address the board tonight on action items? I do not have any green cards. Okay, excellent, thank you so much. Colleagues, our consent agenda, unless there are objections, tonight's consent agenda is approved as presented. Very good. Now we're on to information items, and we're gonna start with our amazing Special Olympians, and we're gonna turn it over to Mrs. Nadine Miles-Stan.
Good evening. The Waterford Griffins Special Olympics team is a diverse group of dedicated athletes who compete in a variety of sports, including track and field, basketball, bowling, and snowshoeing, just to name a few. Our team members come from all walks of life, but they share a common passion for sports and a desire to challenge themselves and each other. This exceptional program has had a profound impact on the lives of our student athletes, fostering inclusion, building self-esteem, and providing opportunities for personal growth. Their participation in Special Olympics aligns perfectly with the district's mission to provide a comprehensive education that equips all students with the tools they need to succeed. Over the last several years, the Griffins have achieved remarkable successes in Special Olympics competitions, both locally and regionally. Our athletes have consistently medaled in respective events, earning recognition for their hard work, dedication, and skill. One of the most inspiring aspects of our Special Olympics program is the way it fosters a sense of belonging and camaraderie among our athletes. Through training, competition, and social activities, our team members have developed strong bonds and friendships that extend beyond the playing field. Here tonight are Kristen Robinson, our Life Tracks Program Coordinator, and Coach Morris and Hannah, and some of our athletes, to share with you an update on their accomplishments, and of course, their parents, because we couldn't do it without them. So I'm gonna turn this over at this point to Ms. Robinson and let her share their successes.
Okay, thank you to the school board for having us again, appreciate it. As you can see, the Griffins are back. You might have known them as the Wildcats, but I think I mentioned last year that they were transitioning to the Griffins, so they are back, and they are bigger, and they are better than ever. You may know that before we left for summer break, our Griffins, they traveled to Mount Pleasant for the Summer Games, and their accomplishments were pretty impressive. So we had a seventh-place medal, two sixth-place medals, four-fifth and four-fourth place, but we also brought home seven bronze, thirteen silver, and twenty gold. in special education, we know we love our data, present and past, so I did have to do some comparison today. The year prior, we had, I brought it with me, six gold, so we moved up to twenty, eight silver, and fourteen bronze, so we've really increased our silver and our gold. Big thank you for the hard work, dedication, and time of the people listed below. So we have Coach Brett Hannah, who will be coming up, along with Coach Melissa Morse. Both are from Waterford Kettering High School. Brett is a teacher, Melissa's a social worker, and they have recently been joined by Coach Bill Young, who is also a teacher from Kettering. Along with them, we have two district parents, Coaches Eric and Don Kraft, and volunteer parent, volunteer Pat C. Burna, district parent who does just as much, I believe, as the rest of the coaches, so. So this year, I think Mrs. Miles-Stan ran through these, but this fall, they already have bowling and pali hockey up and going. They have thirty-plus athletes coming to bowling already. Winter sports, they'll be moving into basketball, snowshoeing, we're hoping to have a little snow for the snowshoeing. Last year, it was grass shoeing, but. And then there's spring sports, will be volleyball and track and field again. So like I just mentioned, we're anticipating a total of thirty-five-plus athletes this year, so when we resumed in 2022, 2023, we ended that year with ten. Last year, we ended with twenty-six, and now we're up to thirty-five, and looks like it might, that might grow. And then the Griffins will also continue, they had a unified basketball team last year, which then involves general ed, and that will continue this year also. And we are going to be able, now that things are running, we're going to be able to increase our fundraising efforts this year, so next Friday, we will be at Miller's Auto Wash off Dixie. Our Olympians will be doing the drying, they'll send their employees home. Our guys will be drying cars from 10 to 1:00 p.m., and all tips will go to the Waterford Griffins. And then Mrs. Miles-Stan orchestrated this summer $8,000 donation from Orange Theory Fitness of Lake Orion, so we appreciate that, thank you. I just wanted to finish, you know, it's not just the time on the courts and the fields that's been important, but these guys have really formed a bond outside of the courts. So just a couple examples, Kelly Harned, who's also one of our PAC parents, arranged for athletes and families to be able to attend the charity preview of the Michigan State Fair this summer, so far left, you'll see some. The Zoo, I believe, was from the summer before, you'll see one of our athletes who's gonna come talk tonight, Grant, and then holiday parties, so they've really formed a bond outside of their sports, too. So now, I'm going to have our coaches come up, and our athletes, and some of their parents.
Well, thank you. We're so happy to be here to talk about Special Olympics. This is our heart, our passion, our love, and you can see why. You just see two of our athletes, but we have some pretty amazing people. So having Special Olympics in our district has really given our students an opportunity to be part of a sports team, okay? And so this is where they're learning new skills, they are overcoming their challenges, they are building their confidence, and they are making lifelong friends. So Coach Hannah and I, and all of us, we invite you to come to one of our games this year, okay? So we'll make sure we get that out to you all, because you are guaranteed to see some competitive action, and a team that just loves to be with one another and support one another, but you are also going to see a family group that shows so much love and support for us, and so hands down, we have the best in the community, so come out and see them. They're amazing, and with that, I'm gonna move it on to our awesome students, our awesome athletes. Are you ready? Who's going next? Come on, come on. And this is Grant Harned.
Hi, Grant, welcome.
Hi.
Okay, he only had a, I was gonna give him some questions, and he'll give you an answer. He's not really great verbally, so, but Grant, do you enjoy going to Special Olympics? Would you rather stay, or wait, would you prefer to stay at home?
Yeah.
Do you enjoy helping your other teammates?
Yes.
Do you believe this helps you with your development?
Yes.
Does it make you physically stronger?
Yes.
Okay. Say thank you very much.
Uh.
Thank you.
Oh.
Thank you.
Hello.
My name is Darby, and I do, that's my second year of Special Olympics. I make new friends, I spend time with my friends, I do bowling, basketball, snowshoeing, volleyball, and, um, satin field. And, and we go to Mount Pleasant for satin field. Thank you.
Okay.
Hi. Everyone, thanks for coming. I'm Connor's dad. Connor's nonverbal, and I think we, we could all underscore everything everyone's already said about after-school activities being beneficial and all that, but I wanna give you some context, okay? And I wanna start with a story. From the time Connor could walk, like I said, he's nonverbal, he has always been drawn to children, okay? So I remember the first time he walked up to a group of children on a beach, kind of stood out there, and he couldn't really get in that group, because he couldn't talk right, you know? Do you understand? And so people did take him in, and he did have a lot of interactions with people growing up, right? You know, with typical children, and occasionally, there'd be an atypical children there, someone that he could bond like a little closer with. And I feel like school is a great place, and he has his family, this is a family now, okay, that he, that he has at school, but I think the Special Olympics is so much more important, because that whole play element, that whole aspect, it's not just in the sports. There's so much downtime, like especially like in the track and field, and there is no more standing outside of a group. It is group to group to group, we're running, having fun, we're talking, we're playing, we're all having fun together. So it's not just about the sports we're doing, you know, and there's no uncomfortableness. Everyone there, it's, you know, like we were saying, positivity everywhere you go, but like, things, they fit perfect now. Does that make sense? Okay. How do you feel about the Special Olympics? Can you read? Is this thing on?
I love your Special Olympics games. Here's your friends. Here's your team picture.
So one of the things he said is, here's our team picture, so we are presenting you with our team picture banner, to be held here, okay? So we'll unwrap it so you can see, but this is our team picture. Is that okay? All right, we'll get in front. Okay, I present to you our graphic. So we will leave it here for you, thank you again.
That's amazing. Thank you again to our, our Griffin athletes, to our Griffin families, our Griffin teachers, support staff, what an amazing, amazing thing. Colleagues? Member Wagner, please.
I just wanted to say, all of you are just amazing. That was, it's always such a highlight to see that, and, and how important, the inclusion is what I love the most, and it's just, oh, I'm gonna cry, but you, you all just, you are such wonderful examples of our community, so. And I'm crying, thank you.
Yeah, I'll just say, I mean, this is, to hear about all of our Griffins' amazing accomplishments and the work that our families and staff do to increase participation, increase engagement, and then we see the benefits of it, and thank you, would you, we, we would love to come and, or for you to come and visit, visit us and hear all of those stories.
Oh, yeah.
Yes, please, tell all your stories.
Yes.
Well, we're just, we're so thankful that you're here and to be able to listen to all of the wonderful accomplishments, and thank you so much for this amazing banner.
Oh, you're very welcome.
We are so.
Oh, we get to hang it in the boardroom, so you can come check it out.
And just, the camaraderie is, is really moving, and how you guys have all are cohesive together, it's, and it just shows that sports, you know, activities, it goes beyond just that, it, it's about that unity and that connection amongst the group, so I'm glad that you guys have that, and it's, your whole presentation was just so heartwarming. Thank you for being here tonight.
Member Petrusia.
And I'd like to thank you. It's a reminder for me personally, I get a sliver, I get whiny, I got a sliver, don't nobody talk to me, in what these young adults go through, in the inspiration that they give people like me, that can, what you can do, and I thank you for that.
I think we could stay here all night.
Yeah.
This would be, uh.
We're done, we're done.
Well, thank you again, and be sure, please, to get us the, I know we've got the winter games coming up and the summer games, we're always there, we're a bunch of sports fans up here.
We'll get the schedule to Ms. Roberts, so she can pass that on to you, so.
And I'll also make the information on the fundraiser, just 'cause, yeah. All right, one, one last round of applause for our amazing Griffin community. Okay, I think we're gonna, we're gonna keep it here, Mrs. Miles-Stan, we're gonna talk about our Parent Advisory Committee.
Thank you. The Waterford School District Parent Advisory Committee, or otherwise known as the PAC, is made up of parents, children with disabilities. The PAC meets regularly, on a regular basis, with myself as the Executive Director of Student Support Services, to discuss, give feedback, and advice on our special education programs and services throughout the district. The purpose of the PAC, the purpose statement of the PAC, is to collectively grow a family and school partnerships that foster mutual capacity, involvement, communication, relationships, and collaboration with our students with disabilities. The members of our PAC work hard to stay knowledgeable about current changes and issues in special education. Here tonight are our PAC representatives, Megan Howey and Kelly Harned, to tell you a little bit more about how they support our students and our families of children that have individual service, family service plans, and individual educational plans throughout the district. I also wanna make sure that everybody knows that this is a non-paid position, everything they do is volunteer on their own time for us.
Megan and Kelly?
Yes.
Welcome both of you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much for having us. As Nadine so graciously said, we're, here is the Parent Advisory Committee for, both from, for Waterford, and then we represent Waterford out to an Oakland County group, so we're gonna tell you about what we've been doing with them, and what our role is there. We've participated in some outreach to Waterford families, both virtually and in some in-person get-togethers, and participate with a couple of different groups, so. Just a little bit about who we are. I'm Megan Howey, the mother of Joseph and Eve, Eve's our motivating reason for being here tonight, she's fourteen, she's in a SCI program, and Waterford's been so supportive of us, so to get to know that whole new world of special education, we just felt like we needed to give back a little bit to help out other parents, and then my husband Tom, of course, so we're all there enjoying baseball, and I'll give it over to Kelly.
My name is Kelly Harned. You just met my son Grant and my husband Greg, they look a little different, because we haven't had a family picture in like eight years. I have a ton of pictures of the three of us. My oldest Jackson graduated from Kettering in 2021, and is at U of M in Aerospace Engineering. My youngest Grant, you just met a few minutes ago, talking about Special Olympics, and my husband, they both have a lot longer hair than they did in, so Grant hates haircuts. But the reason why I actually joined, I joined when Grant was in high school, the transition. Transitioning from high school to school after, there's a lot of different things that you have to do when somebody turns eighteen, when you have a special needs student, and selfishly, but also to educate others, and I just wanted to know the information to be able to help out, so that was one of the reasons why I had done this. One of the things that we do, just for the district, is we work with Nadine and her team of knowledgeable people, and we help put out a newsletter. It's the In the Know, it goes to all of our families, and these are students with IEPs or 504 plans. We've tried a lot of different things, our newsletter gets a lot of hits, we have about 400 views per month, and there's a lot of information in here, and it's not just educational, there's fun things, fun events going on in the communities that you can take your kids to. that you can take your kids to. There's information on IEPs, there's information, videos, there's a lot of good information and data that gets out to our families. So it's definitely something visible to the family that they can view it at their own time. We've had meetings and done things before in the past and this seems to work really, really well as our newsletter that. One of our events we did this year was an ice cream social right before the school year. This seems to be one of our big events that we held in August with the support service staff at Custard Corner. We had over 60 attendance there and it's a great way to kick off the school year and for our kiddos to see their friends and meet new acquaintances. I also am part of, and it's not necessarily called the Parent Advisory Committee, each superintendent has a different name for it. It was Keith's Coffee before. Scott, I believe, called it DPTO. It was a quarterly meeting with the superintendent. In the last couple of years, I've sat on that committee and been the representative. And what it is, it's a representative from each building that comes out and talks about what's going on in their school. And if it's the PTO, if it's, you know, myself talking about Special Olympics or whatever, and then the superintendent would give us updates on what's going on in the buildings or different projects going on in the community.
Okay, I'm gonna slide over and talk about our Oakland Schools PAC. So the Oakland Schools PAC is another parent advisory committee, but it's made up of parents of students with an IEP in Oakland County. Generally, each district nominates two parents, so you guys already signed off on Kelly and I. Several years. But two parents from each district in the county. We meet roughly once a month during the school year. And we work with staff from Oakland Schools. So the Executive Director for, I think it's Student Service, essentially Special Education. So we meet with those folks, we hear from different community groups and agencies, the Michigan Alliance for Families, we hear from, oh, the ARC of Oka County frequently. We hear about legal updates, different things that are coming down from the state, as well as, you know, whatever topics are relevant to us as parents. Like I said, you've had Kelly and I for a little while now. We've both served since 2001. Kelly's been a voting member since 2023. I've actually served on the Oakland PAC Board for the past couple of years, the last two as secretary, and then I've slid in as chair-elect. I always want to say future chair, but that's not really what it's called. So they have a structure of chair-elect chair and then past chair so that we can kind of continue to share the knowledge around. And then, so our, these are some of our topics for this year. Everything from how IEPs work, just so that everybody, it's, it always seems like you know until you're sitting down at that big table. Assistive technology, there's new kinds of technologies to help our kids coming all the time. LRE is a big one for this year. I understand the state is, has some moves they'll be making in the least restrictive environment space. So we're keeping our parents informed as to, you know, what changes we might expect or what kinds of discussions we might be having. Parents from the Oakland Schools Parent Advisory Committee advise back sometimes too. So I know last year we had, oh, I think there was gonna be a change to some rules about how many students should be in a classroom, and we provided a statement on that. But our main goal is to advise. We're not changing anything. We're saying what we, what we think as parents. And then our, really our favorite night is when we get to bring directors like Nadine and Jennifer in for PAC. CAC nights, our special ed administrators come in and everybody gets to sit down together. And this year we'll be talking through what transitions look like for students at different ages and stages in different districts. So we usually get to share some ideas about what's working here in Waterford, what ideas can we, you know, where can we improve, what can we share out to somebody else. And then generally, after we have these meetings, we'll talk back with Nadine and, you know, Nadine can incorporate that feedback into her communications out to her staff and, you know, what's happening in the buildings.
And lastly, I know we just had a big presentation on Special Olympics. We talked a little bit already about the 2023-24 successes, but since I'm on the slide already, I just wanted to touch base. Our summer games, the kids always love that because they get to stay in the dorms and they get a little bit of freedom, even though they don't realize there's people watching over them, but they get, you know. One of the other things, our basketball team, which we didn't talk about tonight, won the states, our A-team one gold. Winter Games, as we mentioned, we didn't have snow last year, but we were still doing snowshoe relays and they all got to stay at the Grand Traverse Resort. My son travels a lot with me and my husband, but there's so many of these students that have never gotten out of Waterford or maybe 20 miles from here. So going up to Traverse City was pretty cool for some of these guys and being able to compete and see different things. Our poly hockey last year was amazing. We got to meet a former Mott student and also the captain of the Red Wings came out, Darren Larkin. He sat and watched our game and talked to all of our students and was really, really excited to meet the Waterford kids. So it was really, really amazing. And then lastly, I wanted to talk a little bit about our state fair trip. I went ahead and applied for our kids because we always need to do something fun in the summer for them. And there is a charitable organization, you had to have tickets, and it was all special organizations of special needs people. It was the coolest thing to go to a carnival, a circus, hang out with your friends, and just be a normal kid and not feel judged. So it was very, very neat for all of them. And yes, that's it. We just have some pictures, of course, of the Special Olympics and we just, you know, if you have any questions for Megan and I, as you can see, we do so many different things with our role as the PAC. We're really out there to get the message out to other parents, talking to them, helping them, or getting them directed to the right people.
I mean, I think, not only are we lucky to have you, you doing this work in partnership with Nadine on behalf of our amazing students, but the entire county is lucky to have you advocating for what's best for our students. Amazing, amazing, amazing.
I know. Thank you both, thank you. I mean, this is, it is, it is, we are very lucky to have both of you, for sure. And our kids are lucky, not just your kids, but all of our kids are benefiting from your advocacy and it's greatly appreciated.
And I think, I mean, just what a model too for parental involvement, for partnership with the schools. And we're thankful that you're here again to share this, to share these stories with us because we don't hear them often enough and this is just such a great, great thing. And thank you from the bottom of this board's collective heart for that. Alex, anything else here? All right, we look forward to hearing from you soon. Thank you guys so much. Okay. We like these kind of meetings. All right, we are going to turn it over now to Mrs. Sarah Davis for a little back-to-school
Okay, so as is annual tradition, we went out to the schools on the first day of school and got some pictures and put together a little video for everyone to see all the smiling faces. There you have it.
Excellent. Thank you, Mrs. Davis, and I think we're just gonna move right into our Stepansky snapshot.
Good evening, Board and our listening audience. My name is Sarah Davis. I'm the Director of Communications and Community Relations for Waterford School District, and I am here tonight for our final Stepansky snapshot update. I know, I heard something. Okay. So this past Saturday, September 14th, we finally held the grand opening of our brand-new Stepansky Early Childhood Center. And might I say, it certainly was grand. Hundreds of people showed up from all over the community to help us open our doors on a warm and sunny September morning. This is an event, a day, that has been in the works since the bond passed in 2020. And in some ways, it feels like it came really quick, in other ways, it seemed like it was slow to get here. So throughout that time, I provided other Stepansky snapshot reports to the Board to help you stay in the loop on the planning going on. So for today, we're just gonna go through a few highlights of the event that day. For our ribbon-cutting ceremony, we were honored to have Stepansky Family Representative, Jim Stepansky, join us, as well as two of our Stepansky students. So I'd like to thank them for participating because having them there definitely made the event all the more special. For vendors, we had Donut Bar Plus Coffee there with five different free donuts for our families that everyone seemed to enjoy. Sweetreads was there with free books and ice cream for all students. A shout out to the district's Title I and MTSAs Coordinator, Chris Siporn, who did a tremendous job of picking out all of the books and ice cream we had available that day, plus working at the event. I also want to thank Michael Williams, our Food and Nutrition Director, who allowed us to utilize the Sweetreads van that far into the school season. Splendor Booth is a local photo booth business that allowed for families to get fun pictures taken that day. The balloon arch, the beautiful balloon arch and other decorations were done by Party Paradise. We also created a community resource area where families could get information from Waterford Township, Parks and Recreation, and the Waterford Foundation. And we very much, all year long, value these partnerships with these community groups, so we were happy to have them there as part of this special day. Preparation and cleanup of the building was, of course, done by our Maintenance and Operations Staff. Big shout out to Director Sid Tippett and his team, particularly Lovell, the custodian at Stepansky, who was just phenomenal in helping us to make sure that the building was ready for the day. Barton Mallow was also amazing to work with. They helped take photos of the event and Carla was onsite to help with any last-minute items we needed, so we thanked them as well. We had security at the event, which was put in place by the Director of Safety, Security and Health, Jim Beaver. Jim Beaver also was our middleman for the CERT team that helped ensure parking for the event went smoothly. We did have an overflow lot at Pierce Middle School and Jim made sure we had two shuttles that ran back and forth that day between the two buildings. So a huge shout out to Jim, who really helped put together some critical pieces of this day. And I'll have you know, he was the last one to leave on Saturday, still picking things up as I drove away. So thank you, Jim. Finally, I want to thank my team, Jane Te Kelly and Kelly Bannister, who have been working on this project tirelessly for months now. Just a few things our communications team was responsible for. We created the billboard that went up on M59 in August. We created the banners that hung from all of the overpasses in the township in the three weeks leading up to the event. We were the first line of communication for all vendors involved in the event. We oversaw all logistics and created the run-of-show. We created all of the shuttle and parking signage, as well as worked with Jim on those logistics. We made the formal list of dignitaries to invite and created two separate invites, one for the dignitaries and one for the broader community, then sent those out through multiple outlets on strategic days and times. We made a slideshow that ran on all of our brand-new Promethium boards throughout the grand opening event to showcase the technology we have in our schools. Which, by the way, thank you to Ian and Gary from Instructional Technology for helping us with setting that up and being there that day to help with any IT supports that we needed. We created a special brochure just for the day of the event, complete with a site map to help families know where to go once inside. Of course, we had our custom swag, such as our colorful Futures Bright Sunglasses. We ran a two-week-long, lifelong learner's social media campaign, highlighting some of our students who started out at Stepansky and are graduating from high school this year. We sent out a media advisory to invite media, a press release after the event, and were able to maintain media coverage from Channel 7, WWJ, and Oakland Press. Post-event, we sent a letter out to all staff and community on behalf of the superintendent, thanking the community for attending. We have since updated the new Early Childhood Center's webpage and are currently working on a podcast episode to further discuss the grand opening. As you can see, there is not one person responsible for putting on this event. We all worked together to make it happen. We had a Stepansky team, a committee, that met several times to ensure that every detail was thought of. Members of that team were originally Superintendent Scott Lindberg, now interim Superintendent Darren Holly, Stepansky Principal Andrea Branton, Director of Safety, Security and Health, Jim Beaver, Assistant Superintendent of Business and Operations, Sandy Elka, Director of Maintenance and Operations, Sid Tippett, Carla Ramirez from Barton Mallow, and myself, Jane Te Kelly and Kelly Bannister from Communications. I can also speak personally from the bottom of my heart when I say it was truly an honor to be able to work on this project. It was really great to be able to focus so much positive energy on something that is 100% amazing and great for this school district. And so I really thank you for this opportunity that I've had. really thank you for this opportunity that I've had. Now, I'm going to end this presentation by playing the Channel 7 news clip that we obtained as a wrap-up to our last Stepansky snapshot. But I'm going to wait for this PowerPoint to finish. We'll look through all the pictures, and then I'll play it. We're almost to the end. Students in Waterford are going back to school in style. Today, Waterford School District opened the doors of the new, brand-new Stepansky Early Childhood Center. It will host more than 600 of the community's youngest learners, who will begin classes on Monday. We spoke to one mother who was excited to send her twins to preschool here.
I think it looks beautiful. It's state-of-the-art. I was really impressed with the, I'll call it the science lab, because I saw they had microscopes. And I also saw a lot of new stuff in the classrooms. I'm also thrilled because he has an IEP, that he'll be able to get some additional services here, because I see the sensory room. They have the, Jim looks amazing, so that he can have his big body play that he needs. The $30 million facility is paid for with bond funds. It is the district's first addition in more than 50 years.
All right, that's it.
Colleagues? Go on.
Sarah, as always, you and your team, Jane, everybody, everybody that was there. I mean, what a great day. I mean, it was kind of bittersweet for me, because it was 16 years ago that I walked my kids into the old Stepansky. And so this building, Kristen and I sat on the committee, and thank goodness, the roof was blue, because we argued over that, because they originally had it red in the rendition. We said, "We're Waterford," and we wanted it blue. But you guys did an amazing job. You had the donuts there, the kids were running around. They were all so happy. And, you know, you guys, you're amazing. You did a great job. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Yes.
I appreciate it.
Yeah, it was amazing. I was just honored to even be part of it, hearing it's 50 years since we've opened a school here in Waterford. And it was just, it's state-of-the-art. You pull up, you see it, it's exciting. Everybody wants to be there. Walked through the building, took my youngest daughter, she's a fifth grader, so I wasn't sure if she would really be into it. I couldn't get her out of there. I mean, she wanted to do the STEM stuff, she was going and playing with the puppets, doing all kinds of things. And, you know, I think, you know, when I was there, too, I saw so many people that I hadn't seen in years who are excited to be bringing their kids there. And I think it's really serving the purpose that we built it for. You know, all these Waterford families are coalescing around this building. It's beautiful. You drive right up, and you see it. And it was interesting, because I had a conversation this past week, and was talking to somebody, and he says, "Well, you know, you guys spend all this money on buildings, and, you know, buildings don't teach." They do. You know, they set the mindset for these kids. They go in, they see the state-of-the-art, they see the STEM labs, they see all these kinds of things. The teachers have the opportunity to be in there, to teach with all these advancements in technology, and everything that they need to purely do the education that they sought out to do, that they had that passion for when they first set out to be an educator. And I was telling him about the building, and I said, you know, "I disagree completely." Because they do, schools, buildings, do teach kids. And these kids have someplace to be proud of, to go to every day. And I'm excited for them and for what's going to happen in the years to come. Thank you.
Member Torres, member Petrusia, please.
I'd like to thank the Waterford residents that voted for this. I mean, a $150 million bond, that was our largest one ever. We had $50 million ones, but that's just to take your roofs and parking lots and the basic things. We needed a big one. Again, the times were a little tough. We weren't sure if we were going to do it or not, to make that decision to do it, which I think was the right one. We got a lot of money, and we were able to spend it, I think, efficiently. It is a neat building. I miss my old Williams Lake school, but I'm almost over it. The new one is beautiful. My granddaughter's going there, so it's, I'm very happy, but I'd like to thank the voters of Waterford for passing that and allowing us to build something that we were able to build.
Petrusia, member Wagner, please.
I was actually going to say that, too, Rob. You stole it.
I don't want to speak.
But for me, this was, I mean, very personal. This was very important to me from the beginning. Being the chair of the bond at that time during COVID was super fun. But it was amazing. Early education has always been an important piece of Waterford. We have always had amazing programs, amazing teachers, and it's something that's very close to my heart. My children were in Stepansky from birth until they ended, you know, were off to elementary. And I spent 10 years in the old building. And someone asked me once, "Are you sad to see it go?" And I said, "Absolutely not," because I knew it was coming, because our students and our families and our community deserved what we did. And I am so proud of this community for supporting that bond. And the turnout on Saturday, I mean, that was amazing. It was such a wonderful day to see our community come together and celebrate something that was so critically important. And it only gives me hope to see all the more wonderful things that can continue to happen in our community. But it's a great building. It's just very cool to see. I am deeply grateful to our community for supporting this, and so humbled to be part of this. And I will forever be proud of this building and all of us for being part of it.
Member Donahue.
You know, the kind of the slogan in Waterford is "The future is bright," and to see the amount of kids going into that building and that we're at capacity already, just is, I mean, all the things that, as Board members, we've already said, but to see that and what the future does hold for Waterford schools, and to see those kids, how they were so excited to go in. The parents were excited. The parents were so supportive for it. Again, thank you to all the voters for it, for passing that bond. But I'm excited to see where this goes from here and into the future for our district. So awesome things are coming.
And Pat, thank you for helping me during some key moments there.
Sure.
During the ribbon-cutting. You were a very helpful Board member. I appreciate it. No one needs to know what it was.
Curious. You tell.
Well, I want to say again, thank you to our incredible administrative team. You know, we push on our administrators here as a board, and this administrative team always seems to step up. And in the case of the Stepansky building, this board demanded that it be the best. And our administrators, they listened, and they went and got the job done. And so, thank you, Sandy. Thank you, Susan. And the whole team did want to say really quick, thank you to Scott Lindberg. He's not working with us at the moment. He's moved on to retirement, but he got us up to really that five-yard line. And this wouldn't be, we wouldn't have had that grand opening without his work and his focus. So I did want to recognize our former superintendent, Scott Lindberg. So, thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
All right. Colleagues, that takes us on now to new business, and we're going to turn it over to Secretary Torres, please.
Superintendent's Recommendation 20-24-25: Certification of Delegates, MASB Delegate Assembly. The Michigan Association of School Boards, MASB Delegate Assembly, is held annually in conjunction with MASB Fall Conference. The Delegate Assembly provides direction to the association, and it offers through an adoption of resolutions. All resolutions adopted by the Delegate Assembly become the official position of MASB as interpreted and pushed by the Board of Directors. It is recommended that the Board of Education certified Pat Donahue as the Waterford Schools District's MASB delegate representing the Board of Education at the Delegate Assembly. I so move.
Support.
Thank you, colleagues. The motion has been moved and supported. Are there any questions, comments, or concerns about Pat Donahue serving as a delegate?
Thanks for doing that.
Yes, thank you.
We all appreciate that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you, and good luck, Pat. Motion carries 6-0. Secretary Torres, please.
Superintendent's Recommendation 21-24-25: National Principals Month Resolution. Whereas October 2024 is declared National Principals Month in coordination with the efforts of the National Association of Elementary School Principals, the American Federation of School Administrators, and the National Association of Secondary School Principals, working with the U.S. Congress to designate National Principals Month and resolutions therefor. Whereas the vision, dedication, and determination of a principal provides the mobilizing force behind any school reform effort. And whereas principals are expected to be educational visionaries, instructional leaders, assessment experts, disciplinarians, community builders, public relations experts, budget analysts, facility managers, special programs administrators, and guardians of various legal, contractual, and policy mandates and initiatives, as well as being entrusted with the education and development of young people, the most valuable resource. And whereas principals set the academic tone for their schools and work collaboratively with teachers to develop and maintain high curriculum standards, develop mission statements, and set performance goals and objectives for schools to achieve educational excellence. And whereas to honor and recognize the contribution of all school principals and assistant principals at all grade levels to the successes of students in Waterford School District, and to encourage residents to observe National Principals Month with appropriate ceremonies and activities that promote awareness of schools' leadership roles to ensure that every child has access to high-quality education. Be it resolved in honor of the service of all elementary, middle, and high school principals, and to recognize the importance of their school leadership so that every child has access to a high-quality education. And to celebrate school leadership accomplishments, the month of October 2024 is hereby recognized as National Principals Month. I so move.
Support.
Thank you, colleagues. Motion has been moved and supported. Any comments or questions?
We love our principals.
Yes.
That pretty much said it all.
Yeah, that said it all. Thank you to all of our principals out there, especially to Ms. Leslie Walsh, who's still in the audience.
All right, all those in favor of this very important resolution, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you so much. Motion passes 6-0. Thank you to our principals. Secretary Torres.
Superintendent's Recommendation 22-24-25: National School Bus Safety Week Resolution. Whereas the Waterford Board of Education recognizes that the importance of protecting the safety of Waterford schoolchildren extends beyond the classroom walls and the school building. And whereas the Board has great respect for the accomplishments of school bus drivers, mechanics, supervisors, and all school transportation personnel in providing the safest transportation possible for children to and from school and home. And whereas coordinating the countless routes over so many miles and supervising the dozens of students on each vehicle requires an outstanding effort put forth by these exemplary professionals who have devoted their careers for transporting our children safely. And whereas the Board continues to recognize and to take pleasure in commending the men and women who accept and meet the challenge of school transportation, now therefore it be resolved that the week of October 21st through the 25th, 2024, is recognized as National School Bus Safety Week, and be it further resolved that this week be devoted to the recognition of everyone who contributes to the successful operation of our nation's school buses. And be it finally resolved, this special week serve as fitting time to urge all Waterford drivers to become more aware of school bus safety regulations, and encourage all citizens to be alert and to carefully, and drive carefully near school buses. I so move.
Support.
Thank you, colleagues. Motion has been moved and supported. What comments or questions do we have?
Again, we love our bus drivers, too, and everyone in transportation. And that's why we love you.
Yeah, I was, my son Damien had to stay home sick earlier in the week, and so we were waiting for his brother to come home on the bus, and we were looking out the window. And I said, "Damien," I said, "the landscaper's parked right in front of the bus stop." Our bus driver is not going to be happy, because that's going to keep them from being on time, and it's going to make things less safe for the kids on the bus. And I said, "All right, let's go, bus drivers, our Waterford bus drivers." Yeah, and we forget that. They are, you know, soon as our students step foot on the bus, they are under the care and protection of our Waterford School District, and we've got an amazing team.
Yeah, normative respect for our bus drivers. A few years ago, I had an opportunity to do a bus ride-along, and it was eye-opening, just the routes, the, you know, the things that can happen, the different variables that can throw things off, and if a route's off a little bit, you know, potentially a kid could get to school late, that's missing education. A lot of pressure on you guys.
We appreciated it when you took the time to do that.
Yeah, it was amazing. It was amazing. It was very eye-opening. So tremendous amount of respect. You know, just reiterate what the Board has just said, you know, a lot of respect for you all and what you do. Thank you.
All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries 6-0. Okay, colleagues, moving on now to President's Recommendation 23-24-25. It is recommended that the Board of Education approve an extension amendment of the current agreement with the interim superintendent to remain in effect until a superintendent is in place. And I so move.
Support.
Thank you, colleagues, and moved and supported. Comments or questions, please?
Thank you, Mr. Holly, for taking on this job. Kind of thrown at you. I think you're doing a pretty good job.
Absolutely.
Yes.
Well, you got to be here for the opening of Stepansky, for the state of school. I mean, you kind of get the good part of it.
I appreciate the good work that you're doing. And told you today, from the brief conversation we had, so we'll talk again tomorrow, but, you know, thank you for stepping up to the plate and doing an awesome job so far. So keep it up.
He's still smiling. I don't think he's working enough.
I did tell him that the, I did tell him that the Board of Education holds special meetings on Sunday nights to sort of conjure up things to throw at him in the morning. And obviously, he's not working, so. All right, all those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. Thank you. Motion carries 6-0. Thank you, Mr. Holly. Okay, colleagues, we're going to move on to public comments on non-action items. I have one green card here this evening, and we're going to welcome up to the podium, please, Mr. Andrew, Andrew Pass.
Yes.
Hi, Mr. Pass.
Hello.
If you don't mind, while you're making your way up there, I'm going to remind everyone that our comments are limited to three minutes in duration. Member Petrusia is our timekeeper. Members of the public are invited to share comments. However, this is not intended to be a time for question and answers. And lastly, participants may speak only once on the same topic and are, of course, asked to avoid statements that are personally directed, abusive, or obscene. So, Mr. Pass, welcome.
Thank you very much. I wanted to take a moment and introduce myself, but first, let me apologize for coming in late. For some reason, I had the board meeting starting at 7:30. I'm the founder of an educational content development company that partners with schools to develop customized content, customized curriculum, because unfortunately, the national publishers are really focused on Florida, Texas, California, and the medium and smaller school districts don't get their own content customized, and students don't always see themselves within it. And I'm a father, and about 15 years ago, my son, Michael, was dramatically struggling in school. He ended up dropping out. Michael, was dramatically struggling in school. He ended up dropping out, got into drugs, and his life was in the balance many more times than I would like to think about. And fortunately, now he's on a good trajectory, but he's been to more funerals than any 29-year-old should go to. And at the time, I always said, if Michael was only 10 years younger, the curriculum would be so much stronger that I wouldn't engage him. And 10 years have passed. And the curriculum is still not as strong as it could or should be. And therefore, my company, which is 15 years old, is now, and we've been working with publishers and providers, is now beginning to focus on school districts. And so it's a pleasure to be here. And before I'm done, before I finish, I should just say one thing. Our Vice President of Finance and Administration is a proud graduate of Waterford Mont. Mont.
Well, thank you so much, Mr. Pass, for being here and for, we have your contact information, and we appreciate you showing up. So thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? Yes, sir?
Hi. I'm a little nervous. I might start a little bit. When I meet, my name is Wesley Evans. I'm a Waterford resident. I would like to bring attention to the cement crushing facility that was opened up behind Kettering High School. Planning Commission back earlier this year approved them and set forth guidelines to keep the neighborhood, school, and everybody safe from the, the silica dust and the noise and the pollution that these companies can make. Back in August, I believe it was August 13th, there was a closed-door meeting between about eight people that proposed a special bond to let this company open without completing any of the site plans passed forth by the Planning Commission. So what I'm asking you guys as the, as a school board, is to file an agreement, or file a complaint with the EPA against the Bell Site Company at 5100 Hudson Drive in Waterford, Michigan, and to, to be vigilant on trucks that are going through the cut-through from Van Zant through the Kettering High School parking lot. The last meeting we had about a week ago, there was two people that had confirmed that there had been many trucks going through the parking lot. I don't know if you're aware of this company, but back in 2018, they had a vigilant driver that was going about 60 miles an hour through downtown Clarkson, drove a double hauler through Dennis Office, almost killed by eight people, destroyed two cars and millions of dollars in damage. So this is a reckless company, and I really think you guys should be very vigilant on protecting the children. You guys speak about how the children are most important. Once they're on the bus, they're your responsibility. So these kids that are now enjoying the, the rewards of having a new school at Stepansky, they're going to be soon going to Kettering High School, getting, getting exposed to silica dust. They may live miles away, but anytime they're at the high school, or there's any, any schools coming to Kettering for any sporting events, they're less than 1,000 yards away from this facility. Facility was granted time to open 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., six days a week, to crush cement. Me being a resident, less than 800 yards away, windows closed, I have noise reduction windows, door walls put in my house, I can still hear right through the doors. I've gone to Gary Wall, I've gone to many people at the Planning Commission. Not much has changed since they did this. But this closed-door meeting that they had was kind of a, it was spilled to me on accident by Dave Hills from the Building Department. Wasn't really supposed to know. Once they found out, everybody was kind of hush, hush about it. But I'm urging you guys and the new superintendent to take a stance. The last superintendent, Lindberg, had a very hard stance against this company. I understand he's gone now, but I would like the school board to take on his stance to protect the children in this neighborhood, or this community.
Mr. Evans, thank you so much. And if you do fill out one of these cards, it'll make sure we have your contact information.
Yeah, for sure. And if there's anybody who wants any information, I'll fill out the card. I'd be glad to send you any, any information you want. Brandon Township shot them down because they were too close to a high school as well. And Waterford just seemed to open, no questions asked. So I, I feel very, very badly that, you know, it ended up that way, but that's, that's the way it ended up, so.
We appreciate you being here and for passing out that information. Please make sure to fill out one of the green cards.
Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Evans.
Thanks.
Is there anyone else who would like to address the board this evening? Okay. Excellent. That takes us to the end of public comments on non-action items. Thank you, Mr. Pass and Mr. Evans. We're now going to move on to Board of Ed reports. Do we have any Board of Education reports this evening?
I do.
Let's go to Member Jocelyn first, please.
I always do. Okay, so Waterford Youth Assistance, we met our, we exceeded our goal. We collected 5,000 pairs of shoes. So they picked them up on Monday, bagged them all up, and so now we're just waiting for the check. So, because it was one of the big fundraisers that we have. So that was exciting. Pumpkin decorating contest is coming up. So if you have your little kids, or I think they do kindergarten through 12th grade, they'll give out gift cards to anybody. Go to the Waterford Youth Assistance website, and they will let you know when the date is open to put your pumpkins in there. I think they're going to keep it open a little bit longer because I'm like, very few people cut their pumpkin October 1st, because in my neighborhood, the squirrels would just tear it up. October 6, we have the harvest happening at House Hathaway from 12 to 5. And the holiday hoopla is just around the corner on November 23rd, between 3 and 6 at Township Hall. They are already starting to get referrals. They said that one of the most disturbing things that's coming is that the assault and battery referrals, especially from the police department and the prosecutor's office, are up already. So just, you know, talk to your kids about being kind. It's not worth it. I think that's it. There was, it was a big meeting, but I'm pretty sure that's it. Yes. Yes.
Thank you, Member Jocelyn, for your, for your continued service on that really important committee. We enjoy those board reports.
I feel like I'm the only one that ever has one.
Who else has one tonight? Member Petrusia and the Member Torres, please.
Since COVID, it's changed the world a whole lot, along with other things. I mean, I used to get the newspaper. I no longer do. I used to look at the Bitchways to make sure I wasn't in them. But we don't see them as much anymore. And a friend of mine, Dad's a guy that we kind of grew up around, Gary Root. He was a former student in Waterford. He grew up in Waterford his whole life, graduated in '59 from Township, spent his whole life in law enforcement, and retired as the police chief of Waterford. He was recognized back in '93 with the Waterford Foundation, recognized him as their honorary. I mean, he's, he's been around it. His three children went through Waterford schools. He's just one of them, them good guys that have always been here, one of the people that, you know, not the founding of Waterford, but the founder of Waterford as I know it, because he was always there. He just was a really good guy. And with things happening as quick as they do, people don't always recognize when people pass. So I just want to give out a shout-out to him and his family. His son, I still see fairly often, he's my brother's age, but he still lives in Waterford. His kids went to Waterford. Just kind of what, it's Waterford. It's what we do. And another shout-out to Yvonne Dixon, in our thing that we passed tonight, her retirement. She was someone that was, I, I enjoyed her. If I had questions on anything, she, she was just always there for me. She, she was kind of fun. She was funny. And I, and I enjoyed her company and her, her leadership. I wish her the best in, in moving on. So that's all I have.
Thank you, Member Petrusia. Member Torres, please.
I just want to talk about the first day of school. It was really awesome being able to still have a little one to take him to the elementary school. And I think you, you really get a snapshot, and I think we saw this at Stepansky too, at how diverse our school district is becoming. And that, to me, is very pleasing just to see the different families and the diversity that we're having here in Waterford. The, my daughter, this past summer, we decided to put her, instead of daycare, we said we're going to try a few different camps. So we tried a cross between some of the Waterford Schools camps, and then when those finished, the parks and rec. But what an amazing experience and opportunity our kids have. She did the STEM camp, and she was learning how to build robots, you know, had pictures of her building robots. And then they had a really great after-school daycare program that she could go to right away, transitioned over to nicely. And I was really happy that we decided to do that because when we were sending to daycare all day long, she wasn't doing a lot of these activities. And she was really pleased to see a lot of her friends from Waterford were actually in her, her STEM classes that she was doing. So I, I'm really just kudos and, and, you know, hats off to the Waterford School District in, in doing that. And she even got Waterford swag bags and all those kinds of things. So it was really cool. And then just to the concrete crushing facility, I'll just say, because the, the school district has taken a stance on it, we did do the letter. But I completely agree with, with what you've said. And I, I've actually have filed a complaint as an individual, not as the school board, with the Office of Environmental Justice. It's very simple. You can go online. You can do it. You can do it within about 10 minutes. And one thing I did find is when you do do that, they follow up within the next couple of days, and they actually go on-site. Because the gentleman who went out to the, to, to the facility, you know, did follow up with me and, and gave me the information that he was able to gather. But I would just say that I would encourage you and others to go online and file that complaint. Because every time you do, there is an Office of Environmental Justice. It's a new division of, of the Michigan Office of Environmental Protection. And this is what they do. They go out to these communities. And if they don't find the, the problem immediately, every time a complaint is filed, they have to go out. So I say, just keep following those. Tell everybody else to as well. Thank you.
Okay. Any other Board of Ed reports tonight? Okay, excellent. Okay, colleagues, by rule, call, vote, the Board will recess to close session in accordance with Section 8(c) of the Open Meetings Act. Secretary Torres, please take rule.
Member Donahue?
Aye.
Member, member, Member Jocelyn?
Yes.
Member Wagner?
Yes.
Member Ristich?
Yes.
Members, someone is not here. Member Petrusia?
Okay.
Member Torres, yes.
Okay. Excellent. Colleagues, let's, let's convene to our honorable meeting spot.